I believe your personal mics are still muted.
Yeah.
Everything else is open.
William might be in justice.
My sister says. The caregiver, we know she said help.
He might be in justice.
I think I saw his car.
All right, let me roll.
Ike is in Rome. And San Diego Southern Hospital.
I don't know. She didn't say that.
You're playing with wine.
I thought I would see some first.
Lucky.
That's true.
All I did for you. He'll be.
Oh, it's raining.
Yes, it's raining.
It's raining.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
He's gonna tell them three. They were raining my. You know, in my territory. Dude, drive with him.
Yes. Everything's crunchy.
Old God be walking like.
Was it too bad?
Then he's up and does well. Up and down, up and down.
Probably sweating the liquor bill. He probably sweating the liquor bill.
Oh, yeah.
I just got it on.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
They're gonna have to mute.
I've been waiting for my dear.
I've gotta bring it. I gotta kill it. I'm gonna bring it to Ike and let him cook it.
No, okay.
I had to mute him while he talks. He gets feedback, but not.
Absolutely. Okay, William said he's down.
We have five minutes.
Yeah.
Mom's good. It's my sister and the caregiver. I gotta go hotspot whenever I went up to see the caregiver for COVID. Aaron's got some major stuff.
How long does the caregiver stay? She's in there.
She'll do whatever we want. So sometimes she stayed a couple of weeks ago. She stayed. She's been on a Friday afternoon and stayed over. We mentioned the Opera House. It's called the Olivia Show.
Oh.
And so she'll do that. Like she went and stayed. That girl, she's. Next week is. I'm gonna go to Lake Charles. I'm taking a little ride. Daddy would get me. Have a little ride. He did. My mother's family. My mother, my grandmother lived in nine. My mother has two siblings that live in nine.
I tell you something you never believe. It's my immediate family. If I live one more year, I live. I live in Carroll, you know, they, I'm dropping my mind. Mom died in sixty nine. Daddy died in sixty six. My brother died in seventy three. Grandparents both died in their sixties. Most died. All from the same thing. Hundred percent heart.
Oh, heart disease. It's a red.
So I'm just trying to make it another year. I wanna do two years. That's the point of view, Rick.
I'm thankful for every day.
Me too. Me too. Every morning.
Because you never know what it could hurt. You can be healthy.
Yep.
Nice days.
I've got something for you. Sit down over there and hurry up. Everybody left. The middle of.
Oh, they should have a meeting tonight. That's all the vote. Oh, yes, again?
One more bar.
What time they start?
How much are they going up?
Oh, they said, if you did, if you have a good. It's seven dollars for the basic fee. But if you ain't watch it on YouTube, their last meeting. You think we got some issues?
We have, we have zero issues here.
Hey.
Huh?
My wife stopped watching.
We have zero issues.
And just start watching that?
And was crying like a lady.
I am. All right, we'll go to special session first, y'all. Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'd call a special session meeting to order on October twenty first. Roll call, please.
District one, Jen Zeta Day. District two, Lynn Whittaker.
Here.
District three, D W A Bear.
Here.
District four, Rebecca Atkinson.
Here.
District five, Steve Jones.
Here.
District six, Ike Rishore. District seven, Jen Zeta Martin.
Here.
District eight, Milton Seymour.
I'll lead us in the prayer and I'll ask Mr. Jones to lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come here tonight and ask for your guidance in making these decisions for our students, our staff, and all our school system and everything we do. We thank you for all that you do for us and have continued to do for us. We actually sing in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge and lead us.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, in the name of God.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Item five, I need, I need to entertain a motion at this time to add agenda item two point two. I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones. Second by Mr. at, Mr. Higginbottom. Uh, to add item two point two, a report on the status of the crisis management and response plan per legislative mandate. I need a roll call, please. Roll call vote.
What are we doing?
Add an item.
Add an item to the agenda.
Yes.
District three, D W A Bear.
Yes.
District four, Becky Atkinson.
Yes.
District five, Steve Jones.
Yes.
Yes.
All of, well, we don't have to do all of it. All right, thank y'all. Moving on to action items. Item, uh, action item number one, consider authorizing the superintendent to determine the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the turf field project at Iola High School and authorizing the superintendent to execute the construction contract with the winning bidder. I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Higginbottom. Questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carry. You got something, Mr. Quibbito?
No, I was just gonna ask.
Go ahead, you can.
Who the bid.
Okay, so.
Got it. That's fine.
I mean, I'm, I'm a yes, but I just, I'd like to know a little bit.
No problem.
Bid tabulation sheet. So the war goes to athletic turf solutions. Um, board members, you more would like to do the entire field? So that comes in at one point eight, eight units. With athletic turf solutions.
That's not the, uh, what was that?
Gio and Ellis.
Oh, it was three. Okay, yeah.
There's three.
So the three that did.
Oh, three is bid?
Three that.
Yeah, and who won with?
Athletic turf solutions.
Where they from?
They're from Welsh.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so it's going to both, okay.
It's pretty local. Fairly local.
No, I'm fine.
Perfect.
It's in state.
Anything else? Good? Thank you. Uh, item two, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye. We did that. I'm sorry. My apologies.
Aye.
Item two, hear report on the status crisis management and response plans per legislative mandate. Ms., uh, Mrs. Stowe?
Um, as per Act three thirty four of the twenty twenty three legislative session, we are mandated, or I am mandated to give a brief report to the board regarding status of crisis management and response plans um, due to safety and confidentiality of those plans. I'm just informing the board that all of those plans have been completed by our twenty six school sites as well as the alternative program.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Um, any other questions? Item three, routine items, there's none. Item four, consent items, there's none.
I move, we adjourn.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones, we adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Higginbottom. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carry. Moving on to finance, right? Let me get it pulled up.
I'm not. Now I'm ready.
You're ready, both.
Yep.
Still learning. I'm ready.
Roll call.
District three, D W A Bear.
Here.
District seven, Jen Zeta Martin.
Here.
District four, Jen Zeta Day. District two, Lynn Whittaker.
Here.
District five, Steve Jones.
Here. A review budget to actual comparisons in the general fund and all special revenue funds. Mr. Carrier?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Yes.
Required item, page eleven is the summary sheet. As of today, we have collected eighteen million one hundred and fifty-two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars for revenue collections of nineteen point nine percent of the budget. We have expended twenty-one million ninety-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars at twenty-three point oh four percent of the expected expenditures for the budget. Everything appears to be on track. We, the deficit, original board adopted deficit was right at six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We'll get to that item in a, in a second, but that deficit will, will have been increased between one point three to one point four million. I welcome any questions any of y'all may have.
I know most of that is still, the deficit is the Crowley High Air Condition Project. Do you, do you know how far along we are or?
Uh, it's actually kinda at a standstill until they finish up on, what, they have two air handlers left?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So the ones they got replaced, they're running right now, the air, new air handlers, everything's fine? So we still got two air handlers left?
Yep. So the billing has stopped. We haven't.
The two chillers are still, they're gonna be replaced, right? That's already done. Okay. About the water tower? Water tower, is it? Has all replaced. So we're only waiting on the last two, uh, air handle.
Mm-hmm.
Cool.
Yep, we will hope.
Be all in this budget? None of it's gonna be in the.
Uh, five hundred thousand dollars hit last year. So we have about one point three million in this.
For this year. So next year.
We're done.
Right, okay. Great. Those budget numbers you gave us.
Thank you.
Uh, are the enrollment figures?
Uh, the, the mid-year budget is gonna adjust for the enrollment figures, but when you factor in the enrollment figures, you're looking at.
That's what I was gonna ask, is they're not factored in now?
Not now, but.
The loss of the.
It'll be about one point four deficit after you factor in your enrollment number.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Any other questions or comments from the board?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Justin. Appreciate you, brother. Consider authorizing the superintendent, the chief financial officer and board legal.
Wait, you gotta do number two.
Yeah, there's y'all.
Hear a report.
Huh? Huh?
Hear a report on October first student count.
No, you're on the wrong one. Start on the agenda.
Yes, the one, okay.
If y'all are signed on as. Y'all are signed on logged in, y'all should see that. If y'all are not logged in, y'all don't access.
I'm logged in.
I don't see it.
I don't see it. I'm logged, I have the same thing that's, that's on.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, I logged in.
Where's, there's two point two. Hear report on October first student count.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Yeah, I was wondering where that was.
Yeah, it's two point two.
You have it on yours, man?
No, all I have is two.
I have one, it's two point three. Three is closing.
I don't know why it did that.
All right, two point two, um, hear report of October first student count.
Y'all should all have a handout. I tell this shows a, uh, basically a school by school breakdown of enrollment trends comparing October first of last year to October first of twenty twenty five. We are down one hundred and eighty-eight students. Uh, these numbers, if you're looking at the schools, if they have an asterisk, those schools have pre Ks. Pre K is not included in these numbers because we don't get MFP funding for pre K students. In total, the board adopted a deficit spending in a, in around six hundred and eighty thousand. The budget, when the original budget the board adopted, expected a decrease in MFP, MFP funding of about five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. But with the decrease in student count, the, uh, decrease in a, uh, uh, MFP revenue will actually be about one point two million. So that's gonna bring your deficit to around one million three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Justin, where these kids are going?
Well, it's, to give you an alarming trend, this is a one-year look. But if you go back exactly ten years to October twenty fifteen, our student, MFP student count was nine thousand six hundred and three students. That is nine hundred and sixty-five students less than what we have today. So in ten years, we have.
Hundred a year.
In ten years, we have lost nine percent of our student body. So basically a percent a year. It, it's very concerning. It, it's a trend that is continuing, not just here in Acadia.
And not just here, every school district.
Throughout, throughout the entire state. And so, yes, in ten years, we've lost a thousand stu-, approximately a thousand students.
Hal- half of those, one eighty-eight are going to the charter school in Maurice. That, that are half of that. So half of that number's gone to one charter school.
I don't think.
And we talked about homeschooling. What'd you say the homeschooling number was?
Well, there, there's an official homeschool from LDOE, but that's only registered homeschool students. Uh, I think around, in Acadia, that's always around six hundred students. But that's only with the registered homeschool students that act, uh, homeschools that registered with the department. You're not required to register.
And you gotta.
And they have probably some that are not registered at all.
And also, if you look at our trends as far as students that are entering us for the last several years in pre K, our pre K numbers have been slowly declining. So when you're graduating more students, exiting more students, and what you're gaining in your pre K settings, that reflects in your enrollment as well. So we're just not seeing.
Are they homeschooling them or are they holding them back?
I think some of that just, what, what's happening in a lot of communities within our state, throughout the country, is that some people are moving out of our area because of where jobs and industry are, they're, they're taking their families somewhere else. So, I mean, we're working hard in our school system. We do have some needs that we're working on and we're making gains in that. But I think overall, in general, people are moving. They're moving their families.
I think when we looked at the census, the last census that was done, the parish overall was in a decline. Which is also reflective of what you're seeing trend wise with your data with students.
So one of the things that does happen is when, when our schools start thriving more, then businesses wanna come in and more jobs will come here. So hopefully, some things are gonna happen with some of the other new things that are happening around in our area. Just gotta work together with, with everybody else within our parish.
Yeah.
In our community.
Thank you, Justin. Any comments or questions from the?
Thank you, that's good.
Comments or questions from the board?
Thank you, brother.
Thank you, Justin. Three point three, consider approval of an increased January sales tax supplement for professional and support employees update for twenty twenty six salary book accordingly.
Are y'all able to see the attachment or y'all?
You see the attachment?
Y'all can't see the attachment?
Basically.
I haven't done anything at all.
Yeah.
This, this is all comes from the funding of a voter pass half cent sales tax in, in July of, of, uh, two thousand and four. Uh, that half cent sales tax is dedicated to employee salaries and benefits only, cannot be used for anything else. With that tax, we were required to withhold ten percent of the collections as a reserve. The sales tax numbers have been increasing the last few years, which has allowed about, allotted about four hundred thousand in additional revenue to be put into the sales tax supplement. The met, the method used back in two thousand and nine was, the ratio was basically the support employees would receive seventy-one percent of the professional employees. So the professional employees were receiving seven hundred and six dollars. The support employees were receiving five hundred and one. When factor in the fi-, the four hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue to put into the supplement, using that same method, professional employees would, would move to one thousand and ten dollars and support employees would move to seven hundred and fifteen dollars. That's basically an increase for professional employees of three hundred and four dollars and an increase in, in support employees by two hundred and fourteen dollars. So that would be the recommendation to the board. It's something we feel that we can sustain if sales tax remains stagnant for at least seven years.
I'll move.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Jones, a second by Miss Atkinson. Any comments or questions from the audience? Comments or questions from the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Appreciate y'all looking at that, Justin. Thank you.
Thanks for looking into that.
That's awesome. Yep.
That's encouraging.
Four point one, consider authorizing the superintendent, the chief financial officer, board legal counsel to move forward on purchasing process for property adjacent to Midland High School. I shall move. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Abear, a second by Mr. Jones. Comments or questions from the audience? Comments or questions from the board?
I'll win this one.
Well, so.
I vote for it, but I, I'd like to have an attachment to see what we got.
We don't have anything to attach as of yet. Board member Abear, uh, expressed the desire, of course, now that they have a baseball program, uh, has been looking at or expressing the desire to have a baseball field that would be adjacent or next to, uh, Midland High School as opposed to trying to have to travel to Miller Stadium here in town or using the Mermontal baseball field. So, um, there is some property that we've reached out to some property owners. They're willing to sell at least six acres of property that is right next to the parking lot at Midland High School. Um, so this process would allow for Justin and I to begin the process of seeking the value of that property and entering into some negotiations with the property owners to purchase those six acres.
So how, where does that money come to buy it?
Um, as of right now, the last we talked about, Mr. Abear has some funds in his athletic funding.
Okay.
And he is willing to utilize that funding to purchase the property.
Okay.
Yeah, look, yeah, I don't, I don't mean to be a stickler.
So we don't have any dollar amounts of.
I, yeah, I know, but I, I just think whenever we have, and I'm not talking this particular item in particular, there are a lot of them. I just like a little explanation other than one sentence or two sentences.
It was in an email that was sent to y'all. It was in an email that was sent to y'all yesterday.
I'm looking at him email.
He's doing good. I think that's gonna be great.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, that's fine. I'm, I'm, no, you and I talked about it.
You know, we had a, didn't have one for years and years in church.
What's that?
We had to go all over everywhere and it's hassle and.
We checked the land. I personally checked the land over several years ago and they said they weren't interested.
No, I was, I'm okay with it. I, I was looking for, cause I was at that workshop in Natchitoches and Andy Garrett and Janet both, both said, if you're gonna have something like we're talking about right now, you need to have an attachment. Uh, because you open yourself up to having a public records request and, and getting other people involved that you probably don't wanna get involved.
Only thing.
Just being transparent.
Just elaborate what it's for, cause we don't have any attachments yet. We don't have any plans yet. We gotta make sure that what the property value is, make sure we can afford it and so forth, so.
Yeah, you and I talked, I mean, but I was looking for an attachment and, and just like the previous one, I was looking for an attachment and I didn't see it.
Sharon has to figure out what's going on with that, cause there was an attachment to the previous one.
There was, yes. I think you can just simply say.
So there might be something we have to work out on how we publish.
Yeah, honestly.
That agenda.
It was just a generic question.
All those in favor of this said motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. I'll entertain a make a motion to adjourn. Make a motion, we adjourn. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Abear, a second by Mr. Quibbito that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbottom.
Bar and sup at Fizzos tonight.
I got to leave. I'm not to be here for that.
She didn't hear that.
Coming, Mr. Jones.
What?
I'll say. Christian, bar and sup at Fizzos tonight.
I'm, I'm leaving, cause I have to go help with the wife with the grandkids as usual. But, uh, Milton sent me a text thanking all of y'all for the vote. Even me.
And thank you. Policy Committee call to order, please. Um, roll call, please.
District three, D W A Bear.
Here.
District seven, Jen Zeta Martin.
Here.
District four, Becky Atkinson.
Here. We don't have anything to vote on. We don't have anything.
Do we have a quorum? We have three.
Receive update on Head Start, item subject one.
Um, in your package, you should have received a Head Start summary. Um, some points to cover regarding, that were within that summary document. Um, ACF memorandum regarding the monitoring process was received by Head Start on September twenty fifth. Um, the program has not received any monitoring notifications as of yet. Um, ACF memorandum regarding addressing vacant slots was received by Head Start on September twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. However, they are at full enrollment for the months of August and September in all the Head Start centers. Correspondence from the administration for children and families office of Head Start regarding the lapse in appropriated federal funds was received October first. Um, for all rewards received prior to the lapse in funding, you may be able to continue drawing funds. you may be able to continue drawing funds during an appropriation lapse. So being that the government is in a shutdown, we will continue to cover Head Start expenses until that's released. Monthly meeting that was scheduled with program specialist Adrian Villa Fana was not held. They are on furloughed until the shutdown is.
Resolved.
Resolved. So any questions about the Head Start summary?
I'm glad to hear that their, their enrollment is good.
Their enrollment is good as of right now. So hopefully that continues.
Yes.
Item number two, receive recommendation and consider Head Start one-time exemption request child care food program.
The Head Start program was notified effective December twenty twenty-four that all claims should be processed through the Kid Care web system with claim submissions beginning March twenty twenty-five. In preparation for that transition, staff began entering all program data, including site licensing information, attendance, student data, and daily menus into the Kid Care system as required. However, March, April, and May twenty twenty-five claims, they were submitted on time via Kid Care. However, it was later determined that those claims were also required to continue being submitted through the previous system. And that omission led to the April claim not being properly transmitted for reimbursement. During a September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five conversation with the LDOE, this requirement was clarified. At that time, program staff confirmed that the March, April, and May claims had not been processed for payment due to the dual submission requirement. Based on this clarification, this formal request for a one-time exception is being submitted. On the April twenty twenty-five claim totals thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents, which is the highest amount of refund between the three months. So y'all need to grant that one-time extension, correct, Justin?
Entertaining a motion at this time? I have a motion by Mr. Higginsbottom.
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Atkinson. Any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carry. Closing, we have nothing. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
A motion by Mrs. Atkinson, second by Mr. Higginsbottom. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Mr. John. That's it. Don't you be videoing that over there, Mr. Quibb.